So we're actually on time for the public hearing for Gifford School. Who is going to present?
I'm Mike Bastis. I think I've met some of you before.
I remember meeting him.
Yes.
I'm David Douglas.
Hi, David.
Hi. Do you know everyone else?
I don't know.
Uh-oh. Sue Zacharias.
Sue. And Steve Oppenheimer. Nice to meet you.
This is Claude Depret, Frenchie.
Yes, we met.
I just, when it's Tuesday morning. Frenchie's our plant supervisor. And I'm the executive director of the school. Going on 40 years.
Congratulations.
Well, and I'm retiring at the end of this next school year.
Really?
But this'll be my last official.
They got a big search committee out to try and replace you, or what?
It's the board's problem.
Not yours, huh?
No, I think they're gonna be looking at someone.
But I think if you could rotate that 90 degrees.
Oh, okay.
Viewers, believe it or not, there's a big television audience for all of these meetings.
And I have some.
Rating is very high.
The height that Steve had asked as well. So I brought that with me because I couldn't answer that for you, so. So essentially, you probably know, we've owned the campus since 1971 on 177 Boston Post Road. We bought the property at 181 about two years ago. And we did take down a lot of diseased trees on that property. And we took out the central system and we straightened it out so that it could be used for the school's purpose. The big thing about the school right now is that it's got the historic structure in the middle of the campus, in the front, on the post road. And it has two wings. It has the baseball diamond on the right and it's got this large playing area on the left. The school's value has greatly increased picking up 181 Boston Post Road. Both financially, I mean, it's worth a lot more money, but it's also worth a lot more than the school because it's a tremendous play area. So we bought it, and this was the second time we tried to buy it, and we were successful this time. And we bought it because it makes sense. It makes sense for the people that come immediately after me and long after me for that to be a part of the school. So the question, and we knew we wanted to make it a level playing field and use it as an activity area. We have never had any ideas of putting in bleachers or scoreboards or anything else, buildings or anything like that. Never had that planned. But we do want to connect the two pieces of property, which, by the way, they were connected at one time. When the Kellogg's owned it, Bolton &amp; Marion Kellogg, it was one piece of property. When we bought it from them in 1971, they carved off 181 for themselves. Had a little house there with a barn. We kept the barn garage. So we wanted to make it into one property again. The problem is that, you remember that the Fenn Center burned down in 2009 and we built a new one. If we owned 181 back then, we would not have built the Fenn Center the way we did. Because the Fenn Center was the back of the property, the back of it was budding up against 181. You couldn't see it from the road, and it didn't make a difference. Well, now you can see it from the road, and we've tried to shield it. You know, it's got air conditioning units. Those of you that came over saw this. And we put a garden over there. We're trying to take the assault of seeing the back of the building away. Well, again, taking that problem of trying to reduce the view of the back of the building and trying to join the two properties together is what we came up with. What we came up with was.
Camera.
For those of you at home, what we came up with was creating a pavilion. We don't call it a gazebo because we're a school. School doesn't need a gazebo.
Pavilion.
A pavilion, and we see it as an outdoor classroom, an outdoor space. It's basically a 20 by 40, open-sided, 16-foot-high, no utilities other than electricity, no water, no heat, no air conditioning other than natural flow. And we see it as a stick-built construction. Basically, the construction company that's built every single thing on that grounds has made a proposal to build this based on the architect's specifications, which we now have. And again, if you talk about connecting the two properties, we have a walkway that goes over to the driveway on 181 Boston Post Road.
Proposed walkway.
Proposed walkway, right. I think something else to mention about this is we're not talking about more students, we're not talking about more cars, we're not talking about anything other than joining the two properties, using it as an outdoor classroom. And doing it somewhat tastefully because that's the way we've done. When I go out, I want to know that it's done right. And doing it tastefully so that it really looks good, it feels right. I don't know whether you all know, but I think you do. It's a school for special needs children, and we've tried to create an environment that really helps all by itself. And then you put the 85 staff members in, and that really helps a lot more. So it's a very important environment. I have a board of directors of 16 people. Would you like to have 16 bosses? But it's also been wonderful in that I have some real expertise on the board, one of them being this guy Phil Ortons, which has really volunteered his time over the last 20-plus years developing the entire campus. So anyway, that's the proposed walkway. This is the proposed pavilion. The architect did put some proposed shrubbery around it, which we're happy to put in. It is not squared off with the rest of the buildings. It's at an angle, and it's interesting. I personally like perpendicular and parallel lines, but the more the architect and this one guy on my board demonstrated that by turning it a little bit, it makes a better block for the backside of this building, but it's also more attractive from the street. That's their opinion, and I'm okay with it. This is a view from the walkway, existing walkway of the current school that connects all the buildings. And what we proposed to do, there's right now an existing patio in here. We're gonna take that out, put that proposed walkway in, fill it with some brick around it, put some benches in it, and make it another area that you can be. Do you get that?
Why don't you talk about material? The materials you're gonna use.
The materials in here?
Yeah.
This is concrete, similar to the other walkways that are connected. There are steel beams that don't look like steel beams. The building is meant to be a maintenance-free building that should never rot.
And it's totally open, no proposed doors, windows, or screens.
Screens, nothing.
Will there be lights inside it?
There will be lights inside it. This is a picture of the inside, and the architect has described to me that the lumens are such that they will not be seen by the street. They are shielded by this angle of the roof. But it does have electric plugs in it and electric lights, but there's no desire to use it throughout the night. We don't operate a night program. The only time we are there at night is when we have back-to-school night and parents, which is like twice a year. So anyway, yes, it has, and we would, if the fire department wished us, which I think they probably will, I think we're gonna do it anyway, put fire alarms in this thing because it is near, next to the other building, very cautious around fires.
Right, I guess you have a reason.
The new Fenn Center, by the way, cost $3,600,000. So this is actually nothing. It's a $20,000, $200,000 building that really will enhance the other building. So I sort of see this as finishing off the Fenn Center and connecting.
This is $200,000?
$200,000.
This is, of course, with the path landscaping and the base and everything else, right? So that's quite.
You don't have the floor heated or anything like that?
No.
But radiant floor?
No. No heat, no water.
I'd recommend ceiling fans, though.
Ceiling fans?
Why do you say no? Why should?
I think that would be an issue for us with our students, something flying.
Oh, and then teens like to hop up.
Yeah. The original Fenn Center, the original Fenn Center was built with ceiling fans. They lasted a week. Does it play kickball in there?
Sure, yeah. Right, okay, we can.
So anyway, it has.
It's reality.
It has handicap access by nature of the fact that it's, oh, right, the elevation is different, so you can roll right in from one side. Actually, I'm more into that myself these days. So what else is there to say about this thing? I think that's pretty much it. We see it as an outdoor classroom, we see it as a pavilion.
I see it as a nice foil for the back of the building, right? It does definitely improve the views you're driving.
It does.
It's bad on your 20.
Yeah, I think, right. And, you know, we put a lot of new trees and bushes based on Kim's suggestion when we took over the property. So that's what we're looking forward to now.
Now, at the time of the sidewalk, there wasn't a looting count, is that right?
Correct. We talked about it, and we're told now there'll be 12 cans placed in the oven. And we've told the architect what Betsy's told us to use for fixtures. So once we start getting together, we're gonna stay on that guideline. Again, we'll follow that guideline right to the T.
The dark sky.
Dark sky, correct.
We can approach that wherever we can.
Yes.
Which does bring up a question, because this is a structure with an entrance, would code say that they need a light at the entrance even though it's light open? I mean, you know how, like, the building codes have, you gotta have daylight. Would this actually need one?
I think that would be a decision with John.
Whatever the building, the lobby tells us that they want.
No, just wondering, because that would probably be the only fixture that would need to be dark sky compliant because the other ones are all inside and down.
But there's something we need to do. Overhead, which still might be a thing.
Step one might need an air.
And Sue and Steve, we did have to do that for the way the Fenn Center, which was a shell, which went straight down, so there was no casket this way. So we did do that behind the Fenn Center because of our neighbor. That was dealt with when we did the Fenn Center.
But you may not, this may be moved, you may not need.
Okay.
According to code, since it's a completely open screen porch, basically.
And as an understanding, there's another issue with the water runoff from the roof. Sami Otis, civil engineers, have been involved pretty much with the entire campus, not pretty much, with the entire campus. And we will engage them and get a plan for them if it needs dry wells, if it needs something else, it'll get it.
Yeah, on.
We don't want to have a problem with water.
So the plant hasn't yet been.
Plant has not been devised. We didn't think we needed it, but if we need it, Sami Otis will do it and we'll do it.
Right, because it's creating impervious material, in other words, an impervious surface which is gonna create a different flow of water.
Exactly. Not just the roof, but all the side walls.
Actually, that brings up another point, because Steve mentioned, there are no gutters on the building, in other words, that you sort of have crushed stone around it.
I brought that, yes, I brought that to the architect as we spoke. He said, if you put gutters in it, you're just looking for more trouble.
We're not advocating gutters.
No, exactly.
We, Steve, I mentioned the French drain as we talked, and I brought that to him, and he said that once we get the civil engineer, as I stated, he will give us the correct form of what we need to do to capture any runoff from the walkway as well as the roof. I think I spoke about our drain system we have on the Fenn Center now with the tanks out back.
Right.
And I believe I spoke about our recovery tank up front of the property, the drywall for our main building, when we did the main building, as well as the middle and high school. All that gets towards our drywall towards the front of the property. So again, I did bring those concerns to the civil engineer, he'll take care of that once we get to that point.
When is that gonna happen, is the question?
It was just brought to my attention, based on you guys coming out. It'll be done starting on Monday, and Sami Otis is very responsive to us because they work for somebody else. They're definitely responsive to it, so it'll happen real quick.
I don't think we can close this hearing until that submitted, our civil engineering consultant has reviewed it, and then we have another meeting, another hearing.
So the date's certain?
So we have a meeting the 20th of August, but it is really booked.
Is there a way that you can do it, subject to the review of John or review of Betsy or review of someone? We'd like to get going on this thing.
Yeah.
I don't want to rush it, but I really would love to get going on it.
You have.
My feeling is that our next meeting is.
20th.
And you want to be.
You have it on the sidewalk. You have a public meeting at the sidewalk.
Yeah.
At Marion Street. It's gonna be a public meeting, right?
No. It wouldn't be that.
It's not?
It, would it be advertised for, we'd have to do like bullshit instead?
No, she's saying continue it to when we have the sidewalk on the 7th and make it hopefully again.
Make it a public meeting?
It is a public meeting.
It is a public meeting.
But that's for 118.
Yeah, that is a different school. We'd have to advertise.
Well, she's talking about, she's talking about piggybacking it.
Piggybacking it on so that, you know, we get feedback from Dave and we have a decision ready for that meeting.
You can bring those cookies over and we'll serve coffee, and you can have coffee and cookies with it.
So it's up to you guys. I'm not gonna be used, though.
It's okay with me. Anything.
So make it a public hearing.
So you.
I mean, we have to make sure that Dave has time, first of all, that we get the documents from them, that Dave has time to review them, get the comments back to them.
So working backwards.
I'm not sure that.
So that's a pretty short period of time.
Yeah, that's two weeks from tomorrow.
From my end, I can get it done because it'll become a tough drive.
Well, it means that we would have to have your drawings in about a week.
Right.
I'll make it happen.
Okay.
Okay, so. And have to count on Dave not being on vacation or.
Right, I mean, there's a lot of pieces of the puzzle that have to.
Right. Has Dave talked, and Kim talked about their availability over the next month or two? That's one thing I don't remember talking about.
Dave's, Dave was on vacation a little while ago, and, I mean, we've been able to accommodate schedules. Kim has not really talked about vacation. So, I mean, I can email Dave and see if this is gonna work for him. If it doesn't, the board's just gonna have to continue.
So tentative, we plan it for August 7?
Yeah.
And you have plans to us then by what date?
Say the week before.
Well, so today is.
It'll be the 30th.
Today's the 23rd. I would say the 30th, and I think that this is.
Let me not be too obnoxious, but let me also suggest, this is such a slam dunk building compared to anything I've done over the last 40 years. The question in my mind was whether or not this would even have a waiver of the site plan process.
Well, it's limited site plan review.
Okay.
So the things that are enumerated in that are impact stormwater, impact traffic, lighting, you know, things of that nature.
So there's no waiver to that process?
It's, I mean, I, we can entertain the possibility, unless, I'm being presumptuous here, we haven't really discussed the plan. They've given the presentation, board members.
Oh, right, we haven't had comments, have we? We haven't made comments.
At the moment, and we'll come back to that in the.
I actually spoke too fast.
I'll make my comment now, I think it's fine. It's an improvement and it looks like it has very little impact once you get your drainage, you know, all that kind of formalized and reviewed. I'm sure that from my point of view, it's not safe for everybody else, but it's perfectly acceptable to me.
I think it's fine for me, too, you know, with the caveat of the drainage issue. And also, any possible lighting that may be required at the entrance, be dark sky compliant.
Good. We conform with that with the Fenn Center as well, the Dr. Johnson, as Sue asked us. Can you make, are we talking about a waiver process?
Yes.
Are we?
Yes, exactly.
But seriously, I mean, you know, you could say to John.
You've been very good.
You could say, you could say to John, I want that issue looked into, I want that issue and that issue, and we'll make it happen.
We're talking about approving the plan with the understanding that the review process, that Dave's review process, in other words, will happen. The question is, we're approving it based on his approval?
Wouldn't we just approve it? I thought the idea is that we would reapprove it when we get together on the 7th, rather than tonight.
He's proposing, in other words, that we speed the process up.
Well, this.
How can we approve it when we haven't gotten all the drawings for it yet?
Approved the drawings, meaning you're talking about the civil engineering drawings? Right, well, this is what he's saying. He's saying, in other words, giving a waiver with the understanding that Dave's approval is necessary, but I think they're uncomfortable with that. I thought I heard Sue say otherwise, but yeah.
Oh, I know, I'm just saying that if it were up to me, right, if everything was in place, it would be fine, but I'm not sure about waivers.
Okay.
That was a, that sort of quagmire around.
Okay, so we're back to the original, we're back to the original idea, in other words.
This is Strava.
All right. So back to the original idea of having a second hearing, in other words, or a meeting for this on the 7th.
Right.
Which we don't typically do.
Right. I mean, another option is if everybody feels comfortable about it, you could make it contingent on, before you get a building permit, that Dave signs off on the stormwater management. And then I don't, I don't sign the building permit application or don't sign off on it until Dave says everything's fine.
That's what I thought you were gonna say.
Oh, okay.
That's similar to what we're doing for the Goddard School for their lighting, and there was one other outstanding issue for the Goddard School.
Right, right. So that's another option.
Oh, I remember, I remember, the Goddard School is.
This is Gifford School. Goddard School had conditions.
So this goes back to.
They're teaching.
Right. You don't like the word waiver?
It's not quite a waiver, but it is efficiency.
It's a contingency.
Yeah, it's a condition.
So we clearly will not get a building permit unless we do what we're supposed to do. Can I just add one thing? When we, when we did 181, when we did clear the land and straighten everything out, it was towards the end of the year, and Dave did come down, there was a very big concern about the water runoff. So what we guaranteed, and that Senor's doing, Steve Godler, which we use 90% of all our projects, we guaranteed that we created an erosion plan, and we kept it in place until we got the earth to hold itself with all the runoff. And we created, that Dave came down a handful of times, verified what we're doing, we got the drawings back here, everything got signed off. So we're very diligent on, when we say we're gonna do it, we will do it by the buck, and only by the buck at the Gifford School. And me, working for my business plan so well, will not go in the other way.
So back to a motion?
That helps out.
But now into Dana Motion.
I move that we approve the proposal for the pavilion for the Gifford School, handing our civil engineering engineers approval of their stormwater runoff plan. And also, the requirement, if necessary, for any lighting at the entrances to be dark sky compliant.
And that's before they give building permit? Yes, before a building permit is issued?
Yes, prior to issuing a building permit.
So I was thinking of a slightly different word, and I try something. But we, most of that we approved the proposal for the Gifford School pavilion with the following conditions, that a building permit is not issued until there's approval for the drainage from the town's consultant. And two, that any additional lighting would be dark, you know, that may be required by state law would be dark sky compliant.
Sure. Yeah, I'd second either or of those.
That would help.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We've got an amount of time to get some things done in this.
Where are you trying to get this constructed by?
Well, I mean, we're gonna have 50, the school's gonna be 50, I'm gonna be 70, and I'm gonna complete 40 years.
It's gonna be within the school year, before the school year.
Oh, yeah. And so I'm working right now on planning 50th celebrations as well as my own demise.
Don't say demise.
So now I'm getting on more of it. So, yeah, no, I wanna jump out and get it done.
So I will draft a decision and.
And we'll read it over the sidewalk.
Or do you want to designate one or two people to review it and then, or it can be done at the sidewalk, but the sidewalk is two weeks from.
Yeah, I'd like to do, Steve and I could, if you don't mind, by volunteering you for it, since you're eagle-eyed and valued.
Yeah.
And I'll help.
Plus, we're cooking, why don't we? We'll have the chef cooking some breads.
So that's the only mail.
I'll get that seen Monday or Tuesday, next week.
Cool. Thank you, Betsy, for our, now, since you've already made a decision, this cannot be considered as a bribe.
That's correct.
So there is no public hearing.
I think it just has to be under $25, right?
This is way under $25.
Give their little glasses, probably gonna need them tonight.
Oh, so now push it, and if you hold it, turn it into a strobe light, so if you wanna bother us, then bother us. Well, no, just hold it back.
Hold it back.
Turn it down to strobe.
I am. Thanks for the rest of that. I don't know what you want. Yeah, that's great, thank you.
Okay, Frenchie, Steve, I'll shoot back.
All right. Take care.
Looks lovely. You take care of yourself, same.
Thank you. Yeah, it's part of me adjusting to my departure.
Yeah, I know, retirement. Oh, you know, when you shouldn't be busy. You know that. I'll take that. This is great.
Take care.
Okay, bye.
You, too.
Well, they already, normally it was quite a, actually twenty-five days, but it's just kind of... But they only, they can't look at...
It's not a job interview, yeah.
So far, I can look at the police station.
Yeah.
I did. I brought it to you, Rob.
Okay, good, good. Do you actually have?
I do.
Okay.